Look, it's all zeros. Zero percent financing, zero percent down, zero percent repairs and labor costs for 10 years. Experience the premier difference today. Financing is available with approved credit. Offer expires 9/30/2024. Premier Heating &amp; Air is offering system checkups. Heat or A.C., your choice, $49. Free estimate, restrictions may apply, and this offer can't be combined with other offers. Experience the premier difference today. Log on to dublin-premierishere.com. Premier Heating &amp; Air, a locally owned and operated company.
This September 5th, 2024, meeting of the Dublin City Council is hereby called to order. Please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the pledge to the flag. I'll ask our council member Paul Griggs to provide the invocation for us today. Councilman Griggs.
Lord's Prayer. Dear heaven and father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for all the many blessings that you've given us. We ask that you help guide us through this meeting, making the decisions that are best for the community, and watch over us as we proceed on into the week. We ask these things in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, you're live. I'm going to pick you up. All right. Thank you all for being here today for our 12:30 meeting. The time was changed to 12:30 today because we have such a short agenda. There are only a couple of items that are needed for approval today. So we will get started with item number one, which is approval of the August 15th city council meeting minutes. Those meeting minutes are in your packet. Are there any questions for Heather, the clerk, regarding the meeting minutes?
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
We have a motion to approve from Councilman Smith, a second from Councilman Mascara. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
If any are opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. We'll move to item number two on the agenda, which is approval of bills over $15,000. Mr. Powell.
The council has a copy of all the bills in your packet.
Any questions for staff regarding the bills over $15,000? If not, do we have a motion? We have a motion to approve the bills over $15,000 from Councilman Griggs. Do we have a second? A second from Councilman Brown. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. We'll now move to item number three, which is purchases over $15,000. Mr. Powell.
We have three purchases for council's consideration this afternoon. First is a number of computers and associated peripheral devices, and these go citywide, and you can see in your backup agenda, the list of departments that will be receiving those. It's 23 total computers, and the monitors as needed with those. The total purchase is $37,537.36 from Dell Technologies, and we had budgeted just over $42,000 for this purchase. We put together the need across citywide and did one large bulk purchase and received some favorable pricing because of that. So thank you to David in our purchasing department for accommodating that for us. That's the first purchase. The second purchase is for the self-contained breathing apparatus, or SCBA, harnesses and the face pieces for firefighters. This is to replace some old ones that are not compliant now, and this is for five of them. The total purchase is from Scott X...I'm sorry. It's from Municipal Emergency Services Incorporated. They are Scott X3 Pro 4500 PSI harnesses. The total purchase is $35,285.70, and I think for our first, it came in under budget, which was, we had budgeted just over $41,000 for that purchase, so we asked that you approve that as well. The third purchase is for the golf course. It's for a range picker to collect the balls off the driving range. And it's a caged cart that will get the employees across the course safely, in case people are driving balls at the same time they're trying to collect. And then also for two haulers to be used by staff, the greensmen that are keeping the course clean and neat, so they're able to use those to carry around equipment and materials as needed to maintain the course. Currently, they are using some old golf carts that don't really meet their needs from our old fleet, and so they're asking for this. We had earmarked some money in the Splot, the new 2024 Splot, which we should be receiving our first check on in the next day or two, and so we ask that you go ahead and approve this purchase tonight. It's from...as for easy-go equipment, the vendor is Textron Incorporated, and the total price is $41,896.4.
All right. Do any council members have questions for staff regarding these three purchases? All right, I know in our materials, we have the full package of how these were...
I got one question, Mayor.
Listed out, yeah.
On the firefighting equipment deliveries in 70 days, I'm guessing that even though you said those are out of compliance, the ones we have are out of compliance, I'm guessing they still are...have equipment that they can use.
Correct.
Okay.
And Fire Chief, you want to speak anymore to that?
Yes, sir. We have plenty in service, and then we can replace it.
The chief stays pretty active about making sure they keep enough...
Just wanted to be sure we're covered while waiting for...
All right. Any other questions regarding these three purchases? All right, if we don't have any further questions, do we have a motion?
So move.
Suck it.
We have a motion from Councilman Mascara and a second from Councilman Brown to approve the three purchases. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. We'll now move to item number four on the agenda, which is action on a resolution to approve underground fiber design and upgrade on the Madison Street project. Mr. Powell.
This is Resolution 2441, a resolution by the mayor and council of the city of Dublin to approve the award of a contract for the telecommunications conversion for the Madison Street project to authorize the mayor and city clerk debts to keep the same, set an effective date, and for other lawful purposes. As you know, part of the Madison Street, Streetscape project is to move all the utilities underground. This will actually move our telecom fiber off the poles and get it underground, so we ask that you approve that. The proposal amount is $68,616.50. We had earmarked $150,000 for this project, not knowing exactly what it was going to cost, so favorable pricing came in on that. There will be a change order, and the resolution will authorize me to approve change orders going forward that will be needed, and it will be to actually something that was left off the request, which is to remove the existing fiber off the line. This proposal was to run the new lines to connect everybody, and so we'll have a change order to get the lines off the old pole once that's completed. And that's around $18,000, I think, is what we're expecting that to be.
What is the timeline on, you know, that completed? Because I talked to Mr. Rix, he's the owner of the cleaners on the corner, and it's affecting his business tremendously, so.
Yeah.
What's our timeline?
We had a...well, it's a nine-month project altogether for the contractor, but we also are reliant on the utility companies, Georgia Power, AT&amp;T, to get their utilities off the pole and underground. I think Georgia Power has done pretty much everything they can at this point in time, and Matthew Bradshaw is here, our engineering director, can speak more to this than I can, but, you know, I don't know if you're familiar, but AT&amp;T is on, they're having a strike right now with their workers, so I'm not quite sure when they're actually going to get the work moving their lines off the poles. But we did meet with the contractor that's doing the actual Streetscape portion of the work that we're directly contracting with earlier this week, and they're going to be providing us an updated timeline soon on when they're going to be able to get at least part of the work completed. But it is a nine...I mean, we had estimated it's going to be a nine-month project, yep.
And...
For that portion, and that started just last month.
I spoke with him, too. He said that, you know, there was affecting business, and one of the things that we got the contractor do was basically rebuild a sidewalk from the Monroe Street over to the entrance of his building, so that people could more easily walk from, if they park on Monroe, to get into the front door. So hopefully that helped a little bit, because the way it had been left, it was not easy at all to get to the front door, and that was just done last week, so.
So we're talking about nine months. What about the other businesses that are going to be affected? You got other businesses up there that probably going to have the same case later on. People can't get to their front door, so we doing that for him, we got to do that for the rest of them, too.
Yeah.
About all the businesses that's...people can't get to their front door because of what's going on. It's very hard.
That's right, yeah. And we had, that was part of the reason for the meeting Monday, is up till now, the person that they had, you know, our contractors using subcontractors to do this work, and our satisfaction with how they were overseeing that work and making sure that the businesses continue to have good access was a big issue in the meeting we had earlier this week, and they're going to address those. I think we got their attention, and they're going to be addressing those as the project goes along.
So I have a suggestion. The entrance from South Jefferson, we would go right, they have that big road work sign there, and people are using the road regardless. Is there a way that we could have the contractor clean up the street and allow traffic there and mark the...if you look on the street, there are where the man covers are, the manhole covers are?
Right.
If we could mark that somehow and allow some through traffic there with a caution, maybe a blinking, you know, like one of those construction work signs, but let people continue to pass and use it, because it's all cobblestone under there, and it's, I mean, it's in really good condition, and it's hard as a brick. And I think that that would free up some movement up and down that street.
What are you talking about?
Talking about coming off of Jefferson. There's a sign there preventing people.
Take that, so there's a big sign where the turn, that turn signal is, there's a big sign there. Nobody's paying...
He's talking about right there, and just turning it in.
Yeah, nobody's paying attention to that sign. They're using the street anyway. So I'm saying if we have the contractor come through, move the debris that's in the street now, and all of the businesses on this side can have access up, and they've already, you know, we have the thoroughfare on the other side that people are using, but the road is usable. It's just they have the, where the manhole covers are, they just need to, we need to caution it. I mean, if you drove 15 miles an hour, you could easily access all the businesses there, and you can still park on the street, too. You just can't walk on the sidewalk.
Yeah, well, Matthew heard everything you just said, and we'll talk with them and see what can be done there to provide better access. That was also a part of the conversation, was making it clear where it's okay for cars to still travel along Madison, so.
All right. Any other comments on this...the item before us is the fiber bid, the fiber upgrade. Any questions regarding that? If not, do we have a motion regarding this particular? You know, right, so we have a motion from Councilman Griggs, a second from Councilman Godfrey. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
I'm Brian Baysmore, president and CEO of Community Bank of Dublin, Lawrence County. We would like to invite you to come by and experience a welcoming banking environment. Come by today and have a cup of coffee, and let us talk with you about our many products: savings accounts, checking accounts, CDs, and our many loans. You're more than just a number to us, you're family. Come by today. Community Bank of Dublin, Lawrence County, member FDIC and equal housing lender.
It's football season, and just like your favorite team, Dublin's Chevy, GMC, Nissan success is built on our teamwork.
Here, Mr. Jones, here's your turn-up parts. Thank you.
Chevy or GMC, we've got your trucks. I might not have been a great ball player back in the day, but one thing about it, Don sells cars pretty good here at Dublin Chevy GMC Nissan.
All right, so that concludes our regular business. It's now time for citizens' comments. If any citizens that are here today would like to make a comment, this is your opportunity to do so.
Good afternoon.
Good morning.
My name is Jacqueline White. I live at 603 Hudson Drive. My comment is in regards to Madison Street. I go to the farmer's market on Saturday, and sometimes I use my scooter, sometimes I ride my bicycle, and sometimes I walk. Originally, when this construction started in the Courier-Herald, it was reported that it was only, maybe it was a misprint, going to be a week worth of construction. So therefore, I saw where the signs, those roadblocks, items to keep people out the street. If you read the Courier-Herald in a section where people complain, tell it. A lot of people are concerned about the farmer's market, because not only is it affecting those people who work from Monday through Friday, but on the weekends, there are a lot of people who come up from the various farms to sell their produce, and it's unfortunate, especially since there is supposed to rain this weekend, it's going to be a muddy bath. So is it possible the city could get with these contractors, subcontractors or whatever, and try to do something on the side where the farmer's market is, so people can come and shop without having to be terrified? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wright. And I'll just note that our Downtown Development Authority Director is here in the back, and if you have some specific suggestions, I'm sure they'll be glad to speak with you about that and how to...
You can wait there, hang up, so I know who they are.
Right there. They're there.
Okay, I'll see you after the meeting.
Okay, great. And there is access to the farmer's market off of Church Street without construction. It's just the entrance on Madison Street does have some construction activity going on, so thank you for those comments. Any other comments this evening, or this afternoon?
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
I'm Brenda Smith, and I come today as the executive director of the Dublin Housing Authority. I wanted to make the community aware of education drive that we are having. It is the 2024 Voters Awareness Education Campaign, and I also have flyers. But on Thursday, September 12th, at 4 o'clock, at the Verlaine P. Copini Center, we have worked with probate court Judge Janola Jackson and Chief Deputy Register Susan Rooks for being able to get the state of Georgia to bring three live demonstration voting machines on site. We will also be able to help first-time persons who wish to register to vote with registration online, online absentee ballot, request assistance. We'll be able to show them how to locate their polling place and provide an overview of the voting process. For first-time registration, all that is needed is a valid driver's license or identification card issued by the Georgia Department of Driver Services. And we have partners, the Dublin Lawrence Black History Festival Committee, Zeta Phi Beta Siforti, and the Dublin Housing Authority is a nonpartisan organization and is therefore nonpolitical, and we can neither engage in partisan politics nor promote the candidacy of any person for public office. And we just wanted the public, the city of Dublin, the county of Lawrence, to know that if they are in need of these services, we will be providing voter education on Thursday, September 12th, at 4 o'clock, Verlaine P. Copini Center. Thank you. And if you'd like a flyer to put in your churches, I have some with you, with me. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Smith. Appreciate that information. Any other comments? Yes?
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
My name is Joanna Glover, and I'm a resident at 320B East Garner Street slash Johnson Home. My concern is from other residents in the area and in the community. First, they say they'd like to thank you all for putting the extra light in. If the police department has something to do with it, we want to thank y'all, too. But we also are concerned about that street, East Garner Street, and Charles Manning, that big old ditch, no, let me rephrase, the pothole. It's been there for several months. First, they gave us an excuse that they were going to, they was doing something with the pipeline. So we decided, okay, so they'll be finished with it. But we're asking that you all please, because the sinkhole is sinking. We ask that you all try to get that repaired for us, because a lot of people have cars coming through there, and I seen the school buses come through there, where they're leaning with it and rocking with it. So we asking that you all try to tighten up on that, get that repaired for us, because it's very dangerous, and it would cost repairs to people's cars. And we know y'all don't need that bit, right? And another concern is we have on that same corner, there's a dark area. We know we have one light over there, but like y'all did on the other lights pole that is sitting right in front of where I live at, I have two lights there, and then there's two lights right there on Washington Street as well. We're just trying, we're not being greedy, but we're asking if you all can put a light there as well, because that's a very dark area, because there are a lot of bushes there, and it's a very dark area, and we're asking that...
Which, which area?
Charles Manning and East Garner Street, right there on the corner, right across the street from that big old pothole. You can't miss it. It's right there in there. So we're asking if we can get another light in there, because it's dark over there in those areas, and we would like to know if y'all can assist us with that as well. And also, we noticed that you are prepared us for speed bumps, right? Right there in front where I live at. Again, once again, I appreciate that. But also coming out of Pearl Street, I'm trying to see if that street is on the list for speed bumps as well, because I have a concern, because my apartment sits right there in front of Pearl Street, so if they happen to give out of brakes and stuff, I would like for y'all to put some speed bumps over there on Pearl Street to slow them down before they get to that stop sign, okay? Because a lot of time, I can look out my window and see the cars coming, like, ooh, are they going to stop or what? So I'm asking if y'all, I don't, I don't live on Pearl Street, but I'm concerned, because it's in my area, and I'm concerned, see if y'all can think about if it's on their list. Thank you. And also, thank y'all for the protection that y'all have provided us with, but we're asking also, I don't know if we need to go to the school board about this, but as far as our kids being outside when it's raining, and they're standing on the corner, and these cars are flying, and we're trying to see if you all, as a city, can be partnered with the school board or with someone to build shelters for these kids when they're standing outside in the rain on school days. I'm good, I'm in.
All right, thank you for those comments. It's always helpful when there's, you know, specific requests, so that we know that we can take a look at those, so thank you for bringing those to our attention. Any other citizens' comments this afternoon? Yes?
My name is George Hollinsworth, and I'm on the board for revitalization of O'Conne Gym, but there has not been any kind of finalization on that situation, and I was wondering when would there be a finalization on the blueprint or decision?
All right, thank you for that. We'll have Mr. Powell or someone with the staff talk with you after this meeting, so you can see what the schedule is.
Hi, I'm Tom Dominy. Here at Dublinwood Nelson, we pride ourselves on providing the industry's highest-quality products at the most competitive pricing. We are a full-service wholesaler specializing in plumbing, irrigation, and industrial products. With a staff that collectively offers more than 50 years of expertise, our team knows your industry, and we can answer your questions and help you get the parts and equipment you need. From mowing to raining, we carry the plumbing, irrigation, and industrial products you need from the brands you trust. We also carry a great lineup of Milwaukee tools. At Dublinwood Nelson, our goal is the long-term success of your business. We achieve that goal with a simple commitment, doing things right, one customer at a time. If you have a question, or if you're looking for a hard-to-find part, give us a call. Our experts are ready to help. Order online, give us a call, or come by at 507 Airport Road in Dublin. We're committed to building long-term relationships with our customers by earning your business every day.
Georgia Pools is now your authorized rec tech dealer. Summer's here, and the temperature's rising, so make a big splash with friends and family now with a pool from Georgia Pools. Or relax in a luxurious hot tub or sauna. No down payments and easy financing. Don't wait a year for your pool. Georgia Pools has the manpower to get the job done. Georgia Pools has a large selection of pool chemicals and accessories. Come see our selection of Yeti coolers, tumblers, cups, and more. Call Georgia Pools today at 478-275-3607, or come by and see us at 1201 Hillcrest Parkway in Dublin. Georgia Pools, your authorized rec tech dealer.
Any other comments at this time? All right, if not, then we will move to council comments. Madam Clerk, Ms. Browning, any comments this evening?
Good comments.
All right, thank you. We have our city attorney on the line, Mr. Groover. Any comments, Mr. Groover?
Good to be with you. Good to be at my home.
All right. What'd he say?
He said, "Good to be with you. Good to be at my home."
Okay, that's right. All right, Mr. Brown.
No comment today.
All right, Mr. Jones.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, everyone, for coming out and being a part of our council meeting this early, and expressing your concerns. And I'd remind council, my fellow council members and mayor, that we have a District Nine meeting on September 24th. You should have gotten it in your email, you can register. It's going to be in Mount Vernon. Yours truly, the second vice president of District Nine, so love for, see that Dublin used to go to these and anticipating this, when the kind got slack, supposed to show up at 5:30, show up and be part of this and get back involved with our district and see what's going on. And just, once again, thank everyone for coming out.
All right, thank you, Councilman Jones. Councilman Godfrey.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. Thank you all for coming out. Thank you for your comments, and Ms. Brenda, I would love to have a few of those flyers, if you don't mind, and you all have a great rest of the week. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilman Colby, any comments?
No comments.
Councilman Griggs.
No comment.
Councilman Smith.
Well, just thank everyone for coming.
All right, Councilman Mascara.
No comment.
Mr. Powell, any comments?
Yeah, just like to update council on a couple of things really quickly. Just a brief snapshot status, the playground equipment at Hillburn Park has been installed mostly. It's probably about 90% there. There's still some pieces that were waiting on to come in that are on backorder, that we'll be able to complete that. We're expecting that the turf will follow soon thereafter, and projecting that this will be completed within the next couple of weeks. And if you go to the next, the fencing that was requested at Pritchett Park to allow for the basketball to be played while the playground is, we're still waiting on the park for the playground, so they can finish that. That's been completed, and I just wanted to let the public know that you can use the basketball court at Pritchett Park. It's open and accessible now. It's been fenced off from where they're doing the work on the playground.
Excuse me, Josh. Do you know when that part will be in? I think they're planning a tail fair reunion.
Yeah, well, Chris and I, Councilman Smith and I met with the tail fair community representatives, and we're projecting that it'll, I mean, we're pushing the playground company to have it completed before their event, which is not until later in October, so I believe we're going to make that deadline, so hopefully that'll be like one of the first things to happen with the new playground, so.
Yeah, Kai Killa asked me that today.
Okay, okay. The Middle Georgia University pickleball conversion has been completed. They still are going to have a timer installed on the new lights that they put up, but wanted to let the public know that they've told us this all go. You're welcome to go use those pickleball courts.
They're carrying down all that right now? Do they have a...
The company that did the work told us it was good to go, so we can double-check that, but I think it's, that timeline may have been that by now. I think it may be just a 24-hour period, I'm not sure. But from everything we've been told from both Middle Georgia and the company that actually did the work for them, which is also going to do the work for us at Hillburn Park, they've said it's good to go. They are going to, we are going to be running them a small water line, so they can have a water fountain there, and they're paying to have that put in, so that should be good to go. We're going to be starting the demo on the pickleball courts at Hillburn Park in the next week or so, so just wanted to let the pickleballing community know where they can go and then where it's going to be taken offline soon. The next picture is, shows the, they're actually pouring the footers this morning. This picture's from yesterday for the foundation for the North Side Fire Station, so the garbage's gotten going on that, and so that's going to come along. If you go out there and look at the site now, you can tell kind of the footprint of where the building will be, and it's a really nice layout, so you can kind of get an idea of where it's going to be positioned on the property. And then the next is the demo of the... And then the next is the demo of the Old Green Building that we, kind of where we all started all this facility project with this council. It's finally happened. We are trying to conserve as much of the, the metal as we can, and we're going to sell that for scrap to get some value out of that as, as we're able to. So, but the contractors are there working now, and so that project's underway as well.
Where is Tanya and?
Tanya is over at the gas shop, and Brandy is working over at the, at the shop, at the warehouse. And then the water construction folks are down with Tony at the wastewater treatment plant, so that's where they're, that's where they are now. And then sanitation, of course, all those employees, they're, they have a nice space. I think y'all saw it in your council, your city manager report for the month of July. The gas department converted one of their larger rooms to a room for them. It's very, very nice, so they're only going up from here for them. So, yeah, and that's just another picture of that. Then a couple of other things I wanted to let you know. Nicole Simmons is here. Nicole, if you'll stand up, she's our new parks superintendent, and she's a former parks and program manager in Glen County, and she has a degree in recreation management and has a minor in organizational communications. She's got a really great fire and energy and personality about her. You'll, you'll pick that up just after a few moments of speaking with her, but really excited to have her on board and wanted to introduce her to the council, and looking forward to what else she's going to do with our parks. Tim Thomas is also, he's not here, but he's also a new part-time center attendant who's assisting us with keeping the gyms open, and he's working there. Tim's no stranger to the community, so he's, he's gotten started. They just both started this past Friday, so. And then Rihanna Stint is here. She is on the second row there. She's our new, she's working in the pro shop. She's the supervisor for the pro shop at the golf course. We've got a full-time position there now, and so she's hit the ground running, so getting some, getting some processes updated. She's got a lot of golfing experience, and so we're excited to have her on board as well, so just wanted to update you guys on those things.
That's a lot of, a lot of great developments for our community. I had the opportunity to go to Pritchett Street Park and look at the equipment there, and I think when it's finished, it's going to, it's going to be incredible. There's, it's really surprising, there's a, there's a lot of new equipment out there. I think it's going to be great for the community. Went and looked at Hillburn last night, and I really like the way that has the, I want to congratulate or thank the Parks Committee for your work in helping select some of this stuff that, for example, at Hillburn, there's the, there's like a baseball theme to some of the playground equipment. I thought that was a great idea, and it's going to be really great for all the kids in our community to have these new playgrounds. So hopefully we can get these things open and available to the public in the next few weeks, and as soon as they are, we'll, we'll put it out on social media, and we'll have ribbon cuttings and, and let everybody know when those playgrounds are ready to be used. So I want to thank staff for all y'all's hard, hard work. It's been a long time in the planning stages, and now we're starting to see the fruition, the results of all our hard work over the last couple of years, so it's a very exciting time for our town.
Yeah, one other thing, just want to remind everybody, next Wednesday is 9/11, and the fire department and other public safety staff will be at the Public Safety Memorial up there off of Tail Fair at 8:30 a.m. for their ceremony that we do each year, so we'd like to invite the council to please attend that and the public as well. And you'll be getting an email about that from the, from the fire chief.
All right.
Let me ask a quick question. What's the, what's the ETA on that cost estimate for Stubbs and that new facility building? Do we have ETA on them estimates?
Yeah, we, well, so at y'all's request, we got an architecture firm engaged, and they are going to be working, well, right now, we're waiting on a proposal, I think, from them on that, so once we get that, we'll be underway to get up, an amount.
All right.
All right. If there's nothing else, we'll stand adjourned. Thank you for coming.